Welcome to the Dougherty County Board of Commissioners meeting with your chairman, Christopher S. Cohelis. Your commissioners include, from District One, Commissioner Ed Newsom; from District Two, Commissioner Victor Edwards; from District Three, Commissioner Plinton Johnson; from District Four, Commissioner Russell Gray; from District Five, Commissioner Gloria Gaines; and from District Six, Commissioner Anthony Jones. Also joining us is your county administrator, Michael McCoy; Assistant County Administrator, Scott Addison; County Clerk, Jawan Ware; and County Attorney, Spencer Lee. Thank you for joining your Dougherty County Commission meeting.
I'd like to call to order the Dougherty County Commission this morning, and this is the chair about calling me. I'd like to call the Dougherty County Commission meeting to order this morning. I see all the commissioners present except for the chairman, and I would like to say in the absence of his this morning, you know, safe travel with him and his family. The next thing I'd like to, before we get started, is ask Commissioner Jones to do the prayer for our meeting before we start.
That's our prayer. It's about the word prayer. Oh gracious heaven, Father, we come, we come in the most humble way that we know how, thanking you for all of all you've done and all you want to continue to do, Father. Father, we ask that you bless all the work that we do here this morning on behalf of our citizens, Father, and we just ask that you continue to bless each of our commissioners, all of our citizens, and just continue to keep us moving forward.
In a positive direction, Father. Father, we just ask, we ask all of these blessings, Father. Not just ones that I'm talking about this morning, but all blessings. We ask them all in your name, in Jesus Christ's name, we pray, amen. Thank God.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Jones.
You're welcome, sir. I'd like to, each one of the commissioners, take time and read the minutes from our previous meeting when they, in their spare time before next week. Now, we're going to move to on our agenda. Delegations from the Commission will hear comments on those items pertaining to Dougherty County for which a public hearing has not been held or scheduled. Please be brief, to the point, and considerate of the time for others. Our first item on the agenda is Mr. Frank Shepherd. What I'd like to do first is ask Senator Powell to come forth, because she was so instrumental in participating with this particular program, and in introducing, if you had any words you'd like to say, before we introduce Mr. Frank Shepherd, the president, and CEO, Sherrell Maddox, Albany State Manager, and Shelby Williams, Business Manager from Feeding the Valley. Thank you all for being present this morning. Thank you, Senator.
Good morning. Good morning, and it is a pleasure to be with each and every one of you. We are absolutely thrilled that you are, that we are here to let you know that we are feeding the valley. And we're doing it in a very, very upscale, in a very gracious manner. And these individuals that you see here with me are hard workers. They've been on the ground for the last two years, and I'm not going to steal all of Mr. Frank's thunder, because he's going to talk about it. We are excited. We have news for you, positive news. Most news that we get nowadays is complaints, but Albany, Georgia is a wonderful place to be. We are not a perfect place, but we are a wonderful place to be, and I am thrilled to be able to serve each and every constituent that's located in the city of Albany as well as the county of Albany, Georgia. Here again, we're not here to bring any negative. We are here to talk about all of the good things that are happening. And to be perfectly honest, when I hear people complain about the city and the county and everything, I don't entertain it anymore. Come with positive what? Solutions. Positive solutions. And if we talk good things about our city, and we tell the good things that are going on, that's what will spread throughout the state of Georgia and throughout our country. So, we're here with you this morning to talk about how we've been able to harness the work of these individuals, and how we've been able to feed those that are in need throughout our districts. So, I want to first introduce Mr. Frank Shepherd, who is the CEO of Feeding the Valley, and he will introduce others that are with him. So, thank you guys so very much for having us this morning.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for the opportunity to be here today to talk a little bit about Feeding the Valley Food Bank, and a tremendous opportunity that we have before us. I want to quickly introduce, Ms. Sherrell Maddox is our Albany Site Manager. She moved down here, she moved down here from Columbus and began our operations here two years ago. It's done a great job in getting our work out in the community, and getting, getting things done. And Shelby Williams is our Business Manager. She has responsibility for a lot of the day-to-day operations on the finance and HR side of the business. Came down to me, came down with me from Columbus this morning to make sure I do this right. So, it's always good to do that. So, thank you both for being here. I will begin with a quick presentation. What we really want to, to talk to you about today is the opportunity that Feeding the Valley has for a tremendous capacity-building expansion in our, in this community here in Dougherty County. Along with that, tremendous grant-funding opportunity from the Department of Community Affairs that I think Mr. Tommy Lohman is going to talk about a little bit. He is with the DCA afterwards. But, just want to go through a quick presentation, certainly want to be respectful of everyone's time, and tell a little bit about Feeding the Valley, what we do, how we do it, the work that we do, work we have done in this community, and about this opportunity to expand and increase the impact that we're having on food insecurity and chronic hunger in this community. You got it? Oh, there it went. Okay, all right. Like I said, I need help with the technical challenges. So, so to begin with, our food bank is almost 40 years old. We started in 1983, based out of Columbus, Georgia, with a small group of community volunteers who wanted to, to help individuals in need. They brought 1,500 pounds of food back from the food bank in Atlanta, and from those humble beginnings, we're now distributing over 15 million pounds of food each and every year. We're also a member of the Feeding America Nationwide Network of Food Banks. We're also a member of the Georgia Food Bank Association, which are the eight food banks to cover all 159 counties in the state of Georgia, and I'm currently President of that association. So, this is our total coverage area. We cover 18 counties altogether, going as far north as La Grange. Where you see there's a star up there, we have a facility, a leased facility up there. In Muskogee County is our headquarters, just outside of Columbus. We built a new facility there four years ago. And down in Dougherty County, as you see, we, we have begun operations here two years ago. Okay. A lot of numbers on this page, but I just want to highlight some of the totals. First column shows you the estimated population in our coverage area of about 570,000 people. And second column shows how many of those individuals are food insecure, or what we call individuals in, in constant need of help, chronic hunger. And there's about 110,000 of them, and keep in mind, these numbers are pre-COVID-19 pandemic. So, the third column shows you the food insecurity rate in each of the counties, and overall, that number is 19.3%, meaning basically, one in five people are chronically hungry in these counties we serve. And those counties cover over 6,000 square miles. In the far-right column are real key numbers in why we are continuing to expand our operations. And in the state of Georgia, in terms of percentage of food insecurity, here we have six of the top 10 counties, and several of them are located right here in the Albany area. So, again, while we are expanding our operations so that we can increase the impact and make those numbers go in a positive direction. Just a little bit about food, how food banking works. You know, basically, we start with collecting food. We do it through food drives. We do it in collecting food from food manufacturers, from food donors, such as retail donors, Walmart, Winn-Dixie, Publix, Harveys, and federal and state commodities as well. And so, we bring all that food in, and then we distribute it back out through a number of different programs. We work with a network of partner agencies, typically churches and other nonprofits, community centers, Boys and Girls Club, YMCA, places of that sort, that help us distribute food throughout those organizations. We then have our kids' feeding programs. Out of Columbus, we feed 2,000 kids a day a hot afternoon meal, some of those coming down here into Albany at the YMCA and Easter Seals. And we have a buddy pack program where we send the most chronically hungry kids home every Friday with a backpack full of food to help tide them over for the weekend. And so, you see, our target audience are low to moderate-income individuals. You know, for those on fixed income, children living in poverty obviously are a big focus. We have a number of programs that help with veterans as well, and homeless and disaster relief obviously has become a big part of our work in, in the times that, that we have been in this area, from Hurricane Michael through tornadoes, through floods, and COVID-19. These are some of those partners in the Albany area. You recognize a lot of the names of World Vision, Sherwood, Lord's Pantry, Boys and Girls Club. So, about 90 different organizations in this area that we work with on a regular basis. And pictures of some of those, Farmer Fredo, Fernando Jackson in the upper-left has been a great partner of ours. Juanita Nixon with Cutliffe Grove, Sherwood Baptist Church, and some friends of ours in the warehouse there as well. Well, disaster relief is kind of one of those other duties that's assigned on our resume, so our job description. And as COVID-19 has hit, we've seen that number become very, very significant. We've seen a 53% increase in demand for our services. We know that 40% of the people that are coming to our food distributions, we've never seen before, have never had or asked for or needed the services of a food bank. You can see here, the picture in the right is one of the first distributions we did after COVID-19 hit its peak. Church in Columbus, where we had 2,500 families show up one morning for the need for help. We started giving out food at 9:30. I got there at 7:30, the line was already four miles long. So, that's how the need has increased in all of our communities we serve, and how the, the need is being met through great help of volunteers. A little more about how COVID has really affected our work. It has affected it in a number of ways. Partner agencies can come into our facility to help decrease the exposure. They do everything by appointment only, ordering things online. Our mobile pantry distributions, where we take food out in the community to help individuals. We don't have the volunteer help necessarily that we've had before. We have to set them up in drive-through, type-zero contact setup, where people stay in their cars. They come through the line, we put food in their trunk, they move on their way. And we've had, with our Kids Cafe, a number of site shutdowns. That 2,000 kids a day that we were feeding, at one point, went down to 300. And we can't feed in, can't get feeding anymore. We have to, to look at different ways to go about that. We go to cold grab-and-go meals, and, and now we've invested in new technology, which will help us to seal hot meals, freeze them, and get even more of them out in the community than we were getting before. This is our facility in Midland, which is our headquarters. We built this building from scratch four years ago. It's 31,000 square feet, has 30-foot ceilings throughout. You see, it could rack four and five levels high in the kitchen, stacked with equipment to help prepare meals, and a large cooler and freezer in the pictures in the bottom-right corner. 150 pallet spots each is a great deal of food to be able to store at any given time. A packing room. Volunteers pack about 12,000 boxes a month that we take out in the community throughout our coverage area. They pack all of those. We had the help of the National Guard for a while, thank goodness, during the height of the COVID pandemic. And another reason for the need for expansion, is you can see our food bank, these are numbers from 2009 to 2021. We were distributing 1.7 million pounds of food in 2009. We're now up to 15 and a half million pounds of food. So, a consistent year-over-year growth of seven and a half to 10%. And you'll see the numbers in 2020 and 2021 spiked quite a bit. That's where we acquired the Albany area and began distributing food down here. So, this was our beginning point in Albany. Say, in the middle of 2019, it happened very fast. We came in the community, and were asked to start serving the four counties of Dougherty, Lee, Tarryl, and Calhoun. We, we needed to get in the community real quick, get set up. This grocery store, former Save-A-Lot grocery store in South Slappy Boulevard, was a good starting point for us. It had cold storage, so it made it attractive. But, you know, grocery stores are not meant to be warehouses. They're meant to get the food in, sell it, and get it out. So, it was a good first step, but we always knew there was going to be a two-phase transition in the community to give us the capacity to effectively serve the areas. So... Again, I want to highlight from the chart earlier, the need for increasing capacity in here. As you see, the numbers in Dougherty, Tarryl, and Calhoun, extremely high food insecurity rates. So, it tells us we have a lot of work to do in this community, and we want to make sure that we give Sherrell and her staff the tools to be able to do that effectively. So, we embarked on an expansion plan. I found a facility that is a tremendous opportunity. It's just built to be a food bank. I showed you those pictures of the Midland Warehouse, because they would very much mirror this building. And remember, we custom-built the Midland facility, because we knew what a food bank needed in order to effectively do its work. And this facility here at 1706 Leto Road is a tremendous opportunity. It's 35,000 square feet. It's got 28-foot ceilings. Land around it, almost four acres, dock doors. We're going to install cold storage units adjacent to the building, so that we don't lose any of that dry storage capacity. Almost 5,000 square feet of cold storage, which will allow us to store and then distribute far more healthy lean meats, fresh fruits, vegetables, dairy items, good food that would help those in need to eat more healthy, as we're all trying to eat more healthy. So, just a tremendous opportunity. We now own this building. We did close on it. So, it is step one in the process. And this is the plan. The previous food bank that worked in this area distributed at the most 2.5 million pounds in a year. We were able to do that in our first year, even with two months of downtime as we transitioned in. The second year, we hit 3.5 million pounds, and our goal is to hit 6 million pounds annually, and that's very achievable inside the five-year window. So, that's kind of it in a nutshell, how food banking works. But, what we need is space, storage space. We need cold storage space to effectively work the area. And so, the opportunity to do that has come upon us. And again, we have a tremendous opportunity in this facility, and with this Department of Community Affairs grant opportunity, we'll, we'll fund the majority of that project. Just a tremendous opportunity for us as a food bank, and we look forward to that. So, thank you all for your time this morning. I'll certainly entertain questions, if anyone has them.
Any question from Commissioner Jones?
Mr. Shepherd, I want to commend you and your team for your efforts and for your work, especially during the COVID season. I noticed when Ms. Nixon and the group down at Cutliffe Grove, I mean, if you were coming up Broad Avenue, I mean, you would have to use another street because of the line. So, that tells me that you got a lot of work done, a lot of people got foods in a lot of people's stomach. That's a great opportunity. And I want to thank you for the expansion. So, I want to thank you for choosing Albany, Georgia. I'm kind of like Senator Sims, you know, when people come with complaints, I mean, my thing is the same thing, same question she has, what do you have? What are some of the solutions? I want you to get in the game, and get off the sideline, get in the game, volunteer, give something. There's something that you can give other than a lot of negative comments. But one thing, I noticed that you, that you have targeted the homeless, and I just wanted to ask you, what are you doing to, to help them with their food insecurities by meeting them right where they are? Because I know a lot of them probably can't get to you. So, what are you all doing?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Jones. Thank you for your kind words. And our work with the homeless is where we partner so well with community organizations, many churches in the area, many other organizations, that will feed them directly. We won't feed them directly from the food bank, but we'll get the food to the partners, who will then go into the small nooks and crannies of the community in their local area, and, and help the homeless in need. So, our food distributions and mobile pantry gives 60 pounds of food to individuals in need. It's designed to be a once-in-a-month supplement to their other resources to be able to make ends meet. And, and the homeless are, have the opportunity to be able to attend those distributions as well. We tend to have them in densely populated areas of individuals in need, so that they can, within walking distance, come in and get that food supplement. So, working with that partner base, we could not do what we do without the help of the 90 partners in our community here in Albany that help us reach all the small, you know, micro areas of the community.
We thank you for your efforts. Again, thank you for stepping outside of the box, doing more than what's expected of you, because if you just average, you're just as close to the top as you are the bottom. But you all are stepping out of the box and being very creative and collaborating with other folks. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Commissioner Gaines?
Yes. Good morning, everybody. A very special good morning to Senator Sims. I watched your tedious journey trying to get to where you are. I saw the criticism and some vilification, I would say, as you tried to do what you have now succeeded in doing. So, congratulations for staying with it and getting us to the point we are, and welcome to you, Mr. Shepherd, and to the entire team.
Thank you.
It's, it's very painful to see that we rank second in the state for food insecurity. However, I have no idea how you define food security. So, if you would help me, please, to understand what determines that ranking, because quite frankly, I'm shocked by it.
Sure. It's, and we use metrics and data that we receive from Feeding America, the national organization we, we belong to. They have statisticians who help us. The definition of food insecurity is a little broader than, than poverty and the poverty line. You know, that's a statistical measure, based on how much income you have a month, how many people you have in your house, whether you are above or below the poverty line, and whether you qualify for certain assistance, certain, certain programs. The definition of food insecurity is a little bit broader than that, because we know that individuals who are what we call the working poor, that a husband and wife who work minimum-wage jobs at or near full-time, okay, are probably going to have an income greater and be above the poverty line, and therefore not qualify for certain federal programs such as SNAP. But they're still going to struggle, okay? There's still one car repair, there's still one child's doctor's visit, or something that away from being potentially homeless, or not having enough money to put the proper amount of food on the table. So, so those measures really broaden the definition of the poverty line. It's, it's, so it's a little bit broader audience based on metrics of people that are clearly going to be experiencing food insecurity over and above where they may stand in terms of where the poverty line is.
Yes. As I say, I'm really quite shocked to see that, because you look at counties like Stewart and some of the other counties around here, and we're ranking higher than they are, and it's really...
And part of it, you know, it's a percentage of population of food insecurity. So, those numbers can skew a bit based on a relative limited population base in some of the areas. So...
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I do mirror the same sentiments as my colleagues. Welcome to Albany, Albany and Dougherty County, Ms. Maddox, Mr. Shepherd, and Mrs. Williams. Thank you all for coming down to have this conversation with us. you all for coming down to have this conversation with us. Is Ms. Dyke on the line, Mr. McCoy? Is our EDC director on the line, too?
We have our DCA representative, Mr. Tommy Lowman.
Okay. My question is going to be, is the site on South Slappy going to be completely abandoned? Or will there be some work done through that site?
No, it will be, we moved completely out of that. It's a leased facility. That property has been sold. And so we have been told at the end of our lease, which goes until September of two thousand twenty-two, that we have to be out by then. So that kind of hastened our plan, the expansion, since we had a pretty defined timeline that we have to be out of South Slappy.
Good. But to find that building on Lido Road is a very nice facility.
Absolutely.
The former company, I guess they went back to another location, but to have that building become occupied is fantastic. My other question is, you talked about some new technology as far as keeping meals hot or cold or being able to serve and deliver those meals to people at a higher rate.
Yes.
Hot meals being able to be transformed to people or handed out to people in the community. And so I've worked with food banks and locations in Albany and partner organizations. And I can see when you say or advertise hot meals, the line around the buildings, I've seen people lining for miles, because they have really nice products in those boxes sometimes, fresh vegetables, meats, and those kind of things. So you will continue to do that and become a more of a distribution site for those partner agencies to pick up food from. Is that the concept?
That's correct. Yes. Yes. The larger building allows us, with so much more storage capacity, a wider variety of product for those partners to be able to come and get food from us. It also allows us to do a lot more out of our Albany operation. Truthfully, right now, probably half the work that's being done through our Albany operation is being done from Columbus. Trucks are coming down on a daily basis. Every Mobile Pantry distribution, which feeds three or four hundred families, that those boxes are being trucked down from Columbus. With this facility, that will not happen anymore. It'll have a fifty-three-foot big rig, refrigerated big rig, will be dedicated to this site. We already have two twenty-six-foot refrigerated trucks. There'll be another utility vehicles as well. So again, will be a tremendous increase in capacity for the site down here and a lot more versatility in the work that they can do.
And with the ninety partner agencies, how can more agencies partner with you? Are there application processes they go through?
It is. It's online for, and again, that's something that we shut down during COVID because of the exposure, but we have opened back up. So on our website, which is feedingthevalley.org, there's a tab right there to go to a partner agency application. They can fill it in online or print it out and do it by hand if they like to, get it into us. And we have agency relations staffs that then come out, you know, do a training process and everything. It's an annual fifty-dollar membership is it, and they can start right away.
Thanks a lot. Thank you, Senator, for your hard work.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Have any, Commissioner Newsom? You have any comments?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I really appreciate all the, you know, your words going forward. Thank you, Senator Sims, for coming down and just hanging out with us this morning. It's always glorious, okay? So I don't know if the other staff members wanted to say anything. It's okay. I appreciate you again. Thank you this morning.
Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Excuse me, Chairman.
Sorry, Mr. McCoy?
We have Mr. Tommy Lowman with DCA, as well as Janet Dyke, our EDC director, on to talk about this particular project and grant opportunity, the CDBGCV coronavirus grant opportunity. So if you don't mind...
Go ahead and introduce them.
Sure. Okay. So Tommy, will you please come in and tell us about the grant opportunity?
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having me. I'm just going to talk through from the top down, and I'll be very brief. First, again, thank you guys for having me. Thank everybody for having me. I want to thank Senator Sims, because these funds are appropriated by Congress to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And so they come through the CARES Act. And when the money trickled down from the state, we got roughly eighty-two million dollars. And we had to decide how we could use these funds the highest and best use, to have the most impact and help the citizens of Georgia. And so we started working, and we need all partners involved. But we started working with the Georgia Food Bank Network. And we learned about the increased demand, which we saw locally, but we learned about the increased demand across the state for food during the pandemic. And so, once we started working around the state, we decided to allocate fifty million dollars to work with food banks, and another twenty-five million dollars to work with food pantries and rural healthcare facilities. The thought behind that was it's a whole model. If we could help the food banks increase their capacity, and then also have grant funding available for pantries populated to expand well, we'd be able to help with this growing problem. But again, that money starts at the top, and as it works down, and then I started, and I've had conversations, because it starts working through, like I said, the Georgia Food Bank Network, and then it has to go down. Our grant funds must go through a city or county government. And so, of course, I called Mike McCoy, and I have a long relationship. And I said, Mike, and I talked to Frank Shepherd for the food bank. And so they, Frank, of course, had a need, and he had a well-documented, exactly what he needed to do. And so I started talking to Mike, and I said, we're going to have to have some partners involved. And I think, right, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's about a five-million-dollar expansion for rehabilitation in there.
Yes, right at four million for the Albany operation, yes.
Okay. And we got several needs going. So right at four million, that's a lot of money. When I talked to Mike McCoy, I said, I want to work with you guys to get four million dollars into the community. And Mike McCoy said, we're lucky enough. So we started working together. And when I say it's going to take all the partners, the food bank will be the recipient of the funds ultimately, and the beneficiaries will be the low-minded income individuals who ultimately see that food. But how the process would work is, we got to have somebody to administer that grant locally. And we're hoping, you know, if everything works out well, you can work with the Southwest Georgia Regional Commission, which we've talked to many times. They are very familiar with how the DCA grant process works. They apply to many CDBC grants, and our regular round CDBC program and our CDBCCV program are going to run very similarly. And so, as you said, it will take all the, I've talked to the county, I've talked to the county attorney, and in addition, I've talked to Janet Dyke, because we're also going to have the belt authority involvement, just to make sure that we don't violate the two weeks' laws as we do this. She's down on board. She said whatever we need. So far, that's the response I've got from the county, from all members, including the food bank and regional commission. And it's just, whatever we got to do to make this happen, is make it happen, so we have the citizens of this community. So that's it in a nutshell. I just wanted to have a high level go down, but I will entertain any questions that you have. But again, what you're thinking, your delegation, they said it's because it is through the Patty and CARES Act that these funds are available, and the allocation to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, that it's safe for them to get these funds. And now we're trying to work to give it to you guys. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, all three questions.
I do have a question. Maybe one of you two can answer this. I'm Mr. Lowman. It's a great investment, four million dollars, a wonderful investment. How much is the local match on the grant, and who pays it?
So we were, when we were working with the Georgia Food Bank Network, we started talking to them. And the food banks, the food banks are committed with capital campaigns, raise money, they have private donations to the Woodruff Foundation and different other ones. So it's going to be a seventy-five, twenty-five, where we will put in seventy-five percent of the grant amount, and the food bank will come up with the other twenty-five percent.
And we have secured that twenty-five percent necessary for this project.
Thank you.
He wrote the check.
Thank you so much. Is that Tom?
Tommy.
Tom. Thank you so very much. We appreciate it. And this is a surprise to me. I had no idea. But we do have plans to even, well, if we didn't have the money, we were already working on plans to fundraise. But this helps tremendously, tremendously. So thank you all. Thank you, Mr. McCoy. And we also want to thank Dana Kraft, who is the CEO of the Georgia Food Bank Association, and Claire Bavinah, who is the, what is it?
CEO.
CEO of Feeding the America. And you've probably seen her on TV, but she came to visit us when we were asking for a change of personnel. And we want to thank them so very much for listening to us, people like Ms. Nixon, people like Ms. Hammond, the Boys and Girls Club, that said, please help us to grow and have a better relationship with our food bank association. So there was a change made, and that was a few years ago. And we are just so pleased, because I shudder to think what would have happened without these ladies and gentlemen, without this gentleman at the helm during COVID times. So thank you guys so very much. And this is amazing. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Senator Sims, step back to the wheel.
Yes.
I just want to thank you
Yes, sir.
for your hard work, boots on the ground. And you're very modest about the work you do. We've worked together for a number of years in the high, in the middle school and elementary school, but you've always been that way. You don't have that bullhorn you used to have when you were in the school system. But I just want to thank you so much for the work that you do. I mean, you do it, and you just do it real smooth. And then all of a sudden, we get a photo op, and we get a lot of work. So I want to just salute your greatness and ask you to just continue to, to continue to help the people of Southwest Georgia, Albany, and Dougherty, and all these, and your whole region, what you do. And I just, you know, it's just, you do so much.
That's why you vote for us.
And I thank you so much for your efforts there and continue. If anything that we can do to help you make this community better, just let us know.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you again. I'd just like to say one thing, that the collaboration between the, I guess, Commissioner Clinton with the EDC director, company, and as well as Mr. McCoy, the collaboration of putting this whole plan together, you know, another, I think is another strive for our Economic Development Commission Board.
Yes, Arthur.
Yeah, yeah. If you don't have, you have anything else you want to add? Or again, we really appreciate you for taking the time this morning to come. And now we'll go on to item B. Director of Planning and Development Services, Paul Forghey, and the county attorney specifically present to update the commission on the citizens' concerns regarding the businesses located on the Ponciana Avenue. Mr. Forghey, hey, good morning.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, let me say something first, if you will, before Mr. Forghey brings you up to date. Two weeks ago, you asked me to get involved with planning and development services to ensure that the location, four-ten Ponciana, was being run according to both local and state regulations. And I went out and viewed the location a couple of different times, and then I've talked with Mr. Forghey on the phone a couple of different times to be brought up to date. And then last week, I met in conference with Paul Forghey and Angel Gray. And they, of course, were the, of course, were the organization that you asked to make certain that everything was done according to those regulations. And I'll have to say, they've done a yeoman's job in doing that. And it's my understanding now that the license C has been, has been provided with the information necessary to ensure that they are abiding by the local regulations and state regulations. My understanding from what Paul Forghey is about to tell you is that they are now legal.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Mr. Paul?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Mr. Lee basically summed it up. But first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Murray for bringing this to your attention and to our attention, because sometimes things slip through the cracks, and we don't know about it. The code enforcement doesn't know about it. My department, which provides information about legal uses throughout the community, we don't know about things that may be illegal uses or not permitted correctly. We don't know about it unless a citizen comes forward. And I appreciate that he did that to get this rolling. As Attorney Lee said, we began investigating this. We were investigating it two weeks ago when we met, but I didn't have any clear answers for you at that time. But in the time that's passed, we've found out that the operator of the personal care home did not have an occupational tax certificate, which is also a business license. She went through the process, and she was under the impression she had one. She got a state license to operate, but she didn't do the final step of the business license, which is to come back into the business license department and receive a permanent OTC, occupational tax certificate. So she left that one step out. But without that one step, she did not have a legal OTC. We spoke with her, and we got all her paperwork in line. She was very cooperative. She brought us everything quickly. So she is legal to operate currently. When she started the process in late two thousand nineteen, you all had different regulations than you do now. You may remember, you passed a rule, a regulation about community residences in January. That ordinance governs personal care homes. So she started under a different set of rules. And at that time, that use was allowed in all residential districts for up to six people. So up to six people, they would not have to do anything special. But now, since January, and since she went through this process to make sure all the paperwork was right, a use such as this, up to four people is allowed by right in any residential district. But you still have to go through a process. And in that process that she went through recently, we determined a couple of things that I think are beneficial to the community, and you all should know about. They're required to turn in a parking plan. Parking has been one of the things that the neighbor was disturbed by, and that's been addressed specifically in her parking plan. We have the ability to approve or deny the parking plan. If they want to park, let's just say in the front yard, we could say, no, we're not, we're not going to approve that plan. And she put all her parking in the rear, so it's not going to be a nuisance, hopefully. But they have to follow their parking plan. They also have to turn in a floor plan and tell us how many people are staying and what they're using for each room for. So there are a few things that would not have been governed previously, but are now. Another important thing is that you're, there are only one of these allowed every thousand feet, a personal care home or a community residence. So we had spoken last time about another one fairly close to this. Actually, there's two that are fairly close to this. One is on Holly, and one is on Cherry Laurel. But both of those are over two thousand feet away. So they meet the thousand-feet separation with no problem. They, and those, well, one is operated by the same company, and it's been in operation, legal operation, since two thousand twelve. So we don't have any other issues with this company. There's no other personal care home within a thousand feet. So we looked at it thoroughly. You know, and in looking this, looking at this process, because it is a complicated process, not to go into it too much, but it's a, it's a process that has a variety of different departments that are involved. The business license department is involved, the fire department's involved, planning department. Hopefully I haven't left anybody else. But so between those three different departments, we have different parts of the puzzle, and we each have checkoffs and reviews that we have to do. So we're trying to make sure that in future cases, something doesn't miss, fall through the cracks, like this one potentially did. But I don't see any fault with the department's review of it. I believe this was just a misunderstanding on the applicant's part. She felt that by getting her state license, she was approved. And it was a mistake. But we're looking at our procedures to make sure that it's clear to applicants in the future that because you have complied with our rules to this point, your state license does not give you the power to operate until you come back to us to get your occupational tax certificate. So even though that may not be our responsibility, we're going to take that on so we can make sure that, well, that hopefully nothing like this happens in the future.
I have a question. Yes, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir. You said they had another location that has been operating since two thousand twelve?
Yes, sir. Uh, you said they had another location that has been operating since 2012?
Uh, they have another, the location on Cherry Laurel is, is run by the same, uh, it's owned by the same company. Um, and they're operating legally since...
And they, but they knew how to operate legally
Yes.
in 2012?
Yes, that's right.
On Cherry Laurel?
That's right.
But they didn't know how to operate legally on Ponzianna?
Well, that, that's the owner of the property, not the operator. So, um, the owner of the, there's a personal care home in that home owned by a, a corporation out of Illinois. They, both homes are owned by the same corporation. The operators are different. Um, so, I, I, I can't speak to what they knew, knew or didn't know, but...
Uh, technically, they violate the four-person rule, uh, because they didn't have license until after we passed the ordinance, right?
Uh, well, I don't, I don't know it's the, i- i- I don't, I wouldn't say it's the four-person rule that, that was violated. It's the fact of having a personal care home without an occupational tax certificate.
So, my point is that the people who live in the house, there are four people who live in the house.
Right.
And then, they need, uh, can I say, around-the-clock ca- care or supervision?
Uh, I believe so.
So, there's always a plus-one?
Yes.
So, they violate the four-person?
Well, it's four residents, so the, the staff doesn't count towards that number. And if I could, just, so, uh, this type of residence, you know, s- i- it, it's a commercial business, and that is a rub for people in a residential area. How come a commercial business is allowed in a residential area? Understand that this is limited to certain types of uses like this, a personal care home for people with disabilities. And this is a, a, a federal legal precedent, and it's based on the Fair Housing Act, to allow people who cannot otherwise provide housing for themselves to live in a situation in a neighborhood. So, they don't have to live in an institution.
Right.
They can live in it, in a neighborhood. And it's, it, the only way they can do it is through a commercial enterprise that can provide that situation for them. And that's why it's legal. Um, and governments that, uh, where it's, it's not as easy as it is here, um, run afoul of the Fair Housing Act or the Americans with Disabilities Act. So, i- it is, uh, it can be a rub with neighbors, but it is, it is legal. Thank you.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Forghey, um, it appears to me that the provisions of the ordinance, as it appeared in January, uh, simply, um, tells you in the beginning what the requirements are, i.e. the number of, of residents, uh, parking requirements, whatever the fire department requires. Um, but I can't see that there is anything in there that allows you oversight once you, uh, give that initial approval. Is there anything that allows you to, uh, have oversight or to police their actual operation, not just the licensing and the setup? Is there any ongoing, uh, oversight?
Not by, not by the local government.
Not by the local government?
Right. I mean, of the operation. I mean, the local government would have oversight of the parking or a- any nuisance issues. But
Right.
as far as the operation of the facility itself, that, that's overseen by the state lic- the state, um, department that licenses them to operate.
And to fill, and to fill you in with that, it's, uh, only if there's a local regulation code violation.
So, I, I thought I heard something, and, and this, this may not even be that pertinent, but I thought I heard something about the residents, um, and their activities in the neighborhood. Unless there's a violation, they can do anything they want. No one can complain about that, right?
I, I, I don't know enough to answer that.
Okay.
But I, I think that unfortunately, i- it's, it's incumbent on neighbors, just as it would be if it were just a nuisance neighbor, to report their activity to whoever they can report it to, to code enforcement or to the state licensing agency in this case. I think that, you know, it puts the neighbor in a position that they shouldn't have to be, but unfortunately, that, that's the best way for it to be resolved.
So, they have every right and every privilege that any other resident has once they meet those initial requirements, and that's just it?
Yep. They
Okay.
they're treated like anybody else.
Anybody else. Thank you.
I, I think, uh, your point, and I, I think it's a valid point. Uh, I think that the neighbor was complaining that some of the staff that was coming to the house for training, uh, that was done on-site, uh, was being quite unneighborly and, and rude when addressed about parking in the front of the house and, uh, being kind of a nuisance to the neighborhood. Um, and I think that kind of goes with the fact that, uh, you know, those individuals probably don't live there. They're just there for training. Uh, they have no vested interest in being nice to the neighbors, because the, you know, they're, they're gone tomorrow. Um, so, I, I do think it's always nice to just be kind. But, uh, but yeah, I think a lot of the problem was they were doing training at the house, so they had, uh, an, a higher number, an increased number of, uh, of, of cars and, and greater traffic coming to that location.
But there's, but there's nothing that can be done about that. They're not violating anything to have people come to the house.
Technically, no, but they didn't have a parking plan, so they were parking in the front yard, and now, they just ha- have to park in the back.
Yeah. And, and see, that's a great, that's, that's a, that's a great concept that, that we, that we have here because of the fact that the neighbor was able to shine the light on, uh, what was going on at the house, and then, we were able to find out that they had other violations. So, and then, now, everybody's on the same page, and I, and I feel like these folks are going to park in the back now. And, and certainly, when they come to, when they come in the neighborhood, they know that, that they are being watched, and I'm sure they're going to be a lot nicer, a lot courteous, and they're going to stay in their lane. But like you said, if you don't have any oversight, you don't have anybody to, to police them and to watch them unless they do something out of the ordinary. And just like I tell the folks in District Six, see something, say something. And that's what happened over in District Two. Uh, and so, I think they're going to be nice, I think they're going to be good neighbors going forward, because they don't have any choice, because we're watching them.
Yeah. Well, uh, two quick things, I guess, Mr. Paul. Um, I guess, you know, like Commissioner, uh, Russell was saying, in this particular situation now, they have put a little asphalt in the back, so they have asphalt in the backyard now with, you know, the staff out the park. The other thing, I guess, I would like to see added, Mr. Paul, is on the, uh, on our business license certificate, where you have to check, like, I know we got on there, uh, adult, if you have, if you're going to have an adult business, adult novelty business, it's, it's only you have to actually specify. So, is it any way possible that when you're dealing with the homes of this nature, that they have to specify because they don't have to go through the zoning regulations? See, so that's how this house actually slipped in, when you have four or less can be in a neighborhood. But we didn't know because it wasn't specified upfront. So, the other little quick thing, going back to, uh, Commissioner Gay, even though with the parking plan in the back, will the county police do the monitoring for that? Because I wouldn't want to continue to put Mr. Paul Murray in jeopardy of addressing the issue when he see a violation, okay? So, the third thing is with the training, I don't know whether they want to do the training. So, I'm, I'm, I'm asking you to have two acts. One of them is the privacy fence on Mr. Paul's side. Because you're saying when they're doing the training, like Commissioner Russell said, some of the staff that're coming to the training, uh, has not been polite to the neighbors. So, if you're going to do the training in the back, I like to, I don't know, you know, I know that's kind of out of our box, but we can do an act, since you've already had a relationship speaking to them.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I think the regulations for, um, running a commercial business in a residential property precludes that you do not increase the traffic count, um, or have, you know, otherwise, I guess, impacts based on increased volume of traffic. Is that correct?
Well, n- not exactly. The, a, generally, for a business in a residential area, you follow, um, a set of rules based on a home-based business. And that's where that rule is, that you can't increase traffic over what the, the traffic normally would be. But the, a community residence, a personal care home, is under a different set of rules where that, that's not specified. They, I mean, they're still a family, a family situation of, you know, four clients and maybe two or three with a shift change, people working there. So, it will increase the traffic to what, uh, let's say, a seven-person home might be, but that's not out of scale with many neighborhoods. So, it, it, it generally won't increase the traffic.
May I? So, so, and it's two different things now. So, in one, in one hand, to be a resident, they meet the guidelines. But as a corporation, when they're doing training, they don't.
Well...
So, why not have them train in a commercial location?
Right. And, and on that, let, let me go back to that if I could. Um, I, I spoke to the applicant, the, the operator, and they said that they were not training. They did not have group training there. I, I can't evaluate the veracity of that. Um, they said they do have a facility elsewhere in a commercial district in the city of Albany where they do offer training. So, if they're going, you know, they, if they hire a new caregiver, they, part of their training is to have them shadow somebody. So, they may have one extra person on-site who's following along somebody else. But they don't offer group training in the houses. They're not allowed to, so if that is happening, we can shut that down. That would be a violation. Um, I was told they don't do it, and they have a place that they can do it.
Here's the problem, is that we don't have any way of policing them to find out what they're doing inside the house. I mean, they can tell you anything. I mean, and people will tell you anything at any time. So, I think that somehow or another, we need to revisit this, uh, this ordinance pertaining to the, to the, to these group homes. All group homes are not bad, but then, we have one here that is, uh, that has reared its head and not been doing what we need to do. Uh, what's, I don't know, this may be a question for the attorney, uh, uh, I guess. I don't know, and it may not be, but, but, uh, we need to look at something, uh, look back on the, on the, on the ordinance to see what we can do, if anything. Mr. Attorney, uh, is there anything that we can do as far as looking back on the ordinance? Uh, amend it to, to re- to reflect, uh, to help us in this type of situation, making sure that it doesn't come up again?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm not, uh, I, I'm not impressed by the fact that we need to revisit that ordinance. I think we've got all we need. Uh, it is simply, simply in this particular case, uh, it arose, quite frankly, with the help of a neighbor out there to simply find out that they've not gotten their business license, their occupational tax license. They've done everything they were supposed to do now. Uh, they didn't put in the, uh, the parking well in the back, and that was not approved at the time, but it has been approved now. In terms of parking on the street, parking in front of it, uh, uh, they can do just whatever other neighbor out there can do. Pull up in the front and let some people walk inside. That, that, that's not a, uh, 30-foot curb and gutter street out there. That's a travelway. It's short, it's, it's, uh, it's, uh, narrow, and cars go up and down it, uh, in a narrow way. Uh, there are plenty of cars that pull off on the side of the road in that subdivision out there.
Now, I'm not talking about parking. I was talking about...
And again, and again, I will answer that directly. I don't think any of the ordinances need to be changed.
Okay. Yeah, but I wasn't talking about the parking. I was talking about the, uh, activity on the inside of the homes. That's what I was talking about.
The activity on the inside is governed by the state. And, uh, you know, whatever happens in that personal care home is governed by the state. They can have visitors like any other house along that area can have visitors. Uh, there may be units in that house that have four or five kids, and they may have four or five cars outside at any one time. This is no different.
But we're talking about training. That's what I was reg- that's what I was regarding, training. They said the training needs to be in a, in a, in a, in a particular area, where it's a commercial-type area. That's what I was talking about.
Again, I don't see anything that needs to be changed. Planning and Development Services does. I guess they could make some recommendations.
Right. Uh, Mr. Paul, are you, have any other recommendations? Or, or, or are you in?
Well, I, I, I would like to point out that the majority of these operate as good neighbors, and it, it gives people with disabilities the opportunity to live in a neighborhood with everybody else. And the majority of these, you don't even know that they're there, because they are good neighbors. And unfortunately, just like bad neighbors of any type, uh, it's up to the neighbors to make a difference. Or with, if they're violating city rules, they tell us, and we can do something about it. Um, and I, I don't know, I, all of our ordinances are open to be revised and made better. Um, I don't see that the issue of them holding training could really be resolved by the ordinance, because training would happen sporadically, and it would unfortunately be up to the neighbor to tell us something's going on. And in that case, if some, if they reported that a business activity is going on that shouldn't be, an inspector would go out and knock on the door, and they have the authority to do that to find out what's going on. And if they're operating outside of their OTC, um, they, there would be repercussions. I can't say what they are, because that's not my department. But something would happen in that case. If they're operating as a good neighbor, you know, they, they are more restricted in a lot of ways than other neighbors are. You know, right now, we're telling them that they can't park in the grass in front of their house. Any of us can, but they can't. So, you know, we are trying to force them to be a good neighbor, and we hope that they will be because they're a business and because they're taking care of people who can't take care of themselves. Um, but a lot of it is outside of our control, and that's part of the reason that we put these regulations in place. When these first came about with the city, um, about seven years ago, there were a lot of stories statewide about personal care homes that were abusing people. And this isn't a cure-all, but this helps make sure that the personal care homes in our community are, have at least followed through with some amount of regulation, that they're, they don't just establish and by themselves and allow people to be taken care of by an unlicensed facility. This at least ensures that they're licensed. Bad things can happen in a licensed facility, but, um, we're, we're trying to make strides within our ability to make sure that this operates as a benefit to the community and a benefit to the occupants. But I, I'm open for suggestions for any changes to any ordinances, but I, I don't, I think this is a pretty good one. Other, lots of other governments in the state have asked for it, because it, it is, is a good one based on what other people are doing around the state, and I know this is a really good one.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you all.
The Chicago operation that owns this, I checked the title on it. Uh, they bought Cherry Laurel, and they bought Ponzianna. They transferred over to Darty County on $850,000 loan on these properties that they had in Columbus, Georgia also. So, they operate a lot of these in Columbus. It's not, they fly by night operation business there. Uh, these, these people are in business.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Thank you, Mr. Paul. Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Paul? Uh, one thing I guess I will do in light of, um, any just some comments, if you have, if you have any. Uh, Mr. Murray, I appreciate, uh, you bring your attention. If you'd like to say something, I don't have a problem with recognizing you. Uh, if you'd like to come forth, uh... But I do want to take in mind that you see that the, uh, the commitment that Mr. Paul, as well as this board, uh, as well as the county attorney, has really exerted to, uh, try to find some kind of common ground. The, uh, the, the home is actually in my district, and I see that the effort that the people did make with, you know, complying with the, uh, the parking in the back. Uh, so, anyway, go ahead, Mr. Paul.
I want to thank the, uh, Commissioners for working on this, uh, problem. It's something that I was not looking forward to, but after a while, it just became aggravating. Uh, Mr. Forghey, uh, stated that the, uh, Ponzianna address did not have a license. I don't think that makes any difference whether there was an ordinance passed in January or not. They should have had a license. Uh, Mike, another question I have, does the Cherry Laurel operation, do they have a license? Is that what Mr. Forghey did?
They did.
Okay. Are they operating by state standards with fire, with fire laws?
Well, I, I guess, I'm gonna cut you off right there. I hate to say it. I was also, I was being from a board or just acting as the chairman today. I wanted you to speak your piece, but not necessarily to point, find, or try to find fault, because I think a- as your commissioner, I know this board has exhausted and tried to make sure that we do what we need to do that's in compliance and not, and necessarily, not necessarily just come out the box and try to shut somebody down. And when I do see that, uh, all the efforts we have exhausted in trying to find some kind of resolution, um, and... kind of resolution, um, and that's where my hesitation, because I want you... Am I making sense there?
Okay. You understand.
It ain't necessarily like whether it's the police, the, the farmer's fault. It's not necessarily saying it's the public enforcement fault. It's like, we appreciate you bringing that to the light to us. Now we've tried to find those resolutions, and as you heard, the, the, the county attorney opinion of that, we, where are we? So again, that's kind of, I was trying to be diplomatic, and I guess that's what I'm asking you to do.
Okay. The problem began was a series of not only parking, but other things. And I handed the chairman, and you have a copy of the incident reports. That's what started the DCPD showing up, uh, the fire department showing up, uh, the copies here, which are very concerning, uh, the report. I don't have the actual priest's reports, but these are communications, but I would see them coming over here every other week. Uh, there's one that's listed here, everybody had a copy of this, it says, I'm very concerned about, it's a behavioral home. So is that a disability? Behavioral means behavioral, and sometimes they've had to evacuate that facility with the caregivers because of an incident with the behavior. Is that behavioral gonna flow over to next door when one of my families working in the yard, one of them was walking around the neighborhood, and they finally got her and put her back? The listing here is one that says inhumane treatment, disorderly conduct, demented person. That, everybody had a copy when I first gave that. Those were some, those were initially my concerns when I saw the DCPD there and all these departments. Then it be, then it was all the parking, and it just came, it was a combination, culmination of all this stuff. And Ms. Gaines was perfectly correct in that there is no oversight, except for, I've got the brunt of it, I'm the representative for the neighborhood. So I'm up here standing up, my neighbors were on TV, I was on TV, and it just disrupted the whole neighborhood. Their comment, uh, response, uh, for being there, uh, was, "Our mission supports people with disabilities living as independently as possible in community-based settings with the same rights and opportunities that any of, any of their neighbors enjoy." Yes, I agree with that. I would like to enjoy the same rights also. So I'm, I'm very concerned with these incident reports. And even after the last commission meeting, the fire department was there two weeks later. So it's just a constant, constant thing going on there.
Yep, all, Commissioner Gaines.
Mr. Paul, have, have you, uh, talked with your state representative?
No.
Because if I'm, if I'm understanding it, and perhaps I'm not, um, the operation of that facility is in the hand of the state, and it is the state who has the authority to police them and not the local government. So, uh, if I could please, and perhaps I, I hope I'm not out of order in asking you to speak with your state representative.
Before I brought this before the commission, I looked into this, and Mr. Forghey was correct, it's under the FHA and ADA, Immortal Disabilities Act, for Housing Administration. There are certain guidelines that fall into disabilities, and where you cannot, uh, do anything about that. And it's very frustrating...
I understand.
...to have a commercial business in a residential area. Like I mentioned, I just had my home refinanced. Not a very good appraisal. Got a pretty nice, pretty big home in that area. But I want to handle that, and...
But, but...
One of the good things is the sign's gone, the sign's gone at Cherry Laurel. And as far as training, I mean, when you look over the fence and you see people dragging somebody and helping assist them and how to work and do the stuff, that's the only thing I could rationalize why there are so many cars. Four, five, seven cars, fine. Twelve on a daily basis? What kind of shift change is that? And there's only supposed to be four? I don't know how many is actually, I, I'm guessing that perhaps there's two in there. You can have a maximum of four. Uh, I don't know actually how many people are in there that have the behavioral problem.
Yes. You know, I, I, I hear everything you're saying, and I certainly...
On addressing into that, I, I probably can't do anything, because under the federal laws. It's just, just...
But, but it's, it's, I mean, you're, you're fairly clear that the state exercises more authority...
Right.
...over the operation than the local government, right? You're clear on that.
Yes. Yes, I understand all that. I, I've done a lot of research on this...
Okay.
...before I've come here. And, and things have gotten better, but they did get better before, before I had to come back.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's...
And, and you know...
We've been talking with the manager, and they have paved the back, and parking's in the back, there's less activity there than there was, but...
But let me, let me just leave it at this, I would recommend that, uh, you talk to your state representative, because the state does have far more authority, as it appears, than we do. If you will accept that recommendation.
Okay. Hopefully, things have calmed down, I don't have to...
Yes, we hope so, we hope so, thank you.
They can cooperate, they do have a, have a new manager there, that's talked to my wife, and they've been getting along, and...
But you do understand that the county has, uh, exhausted its authority.
Right, I understand that, I understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Paul. Thank you, uh, Commissioner Gaines, for summing that up for me. The next thing on the agenda is, uh, Mr. Wright, the DBA, Afrim Tech, present, present to continue discussion, the building capacity program for the small businesses and other concern. Mr. Wright? Hey, Mr. Good morning.
Well, greetings to you. What the thing that I wanted to bring to your attention today, we will be looking at all of the, uh, metropolitan areas in Georgia and compare them with, uh, Dougherty County since, uh, the commission gave us a curveball on whatever day they, I think it was June twenty-eighth, but...
You gotta hit it, Mr. Wright.
Listen, I'm a very good ballplayer now, you're in the right field to pick a hundred.
Good for you, Mr. Wright.
When I, when I first started teaching accounting back in nineteen eighty-six, uh, this book has twelve hundred pages, and the dean of the College of Business, uh, told us to take this, instead of teaching it in five semesters as required, do it in three. So let you know, I know how to do things. Dr. Warren, this is the eighteenth edition of this, uh, book, but he's a professor at University of Georgia, who, my point here is, this book is applicable all over the United States and most of Western Europe. In other words, whatever they learn in New York and New Mexico is applicable here. The thing that, uh, we need to understand, and one reason we, we are not getting ahead, uh, we submitted the information at late, we're not saying we did not get it to you on time, but the information that we're gonna talk about is already, uh, with the clerk's office. And for anyone who wants to get the information, all they have to do is see Mrs. Howell or Madam Clerk, or just email me at barwright2021@gmail.com. Barry Appleroy Wright, 2021@gmail.com. The thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, uh, I provided three copies today, and the, uh, original is in the purview of the clerk's office already. And if you want to get it individually or collectively, I will email it to you from wherever you are, as long as you have an email address. What I discovered in doing this, I'm just gonna hit the high points, I'm not gonna waste your time, because some of the people I work for, they do pay us. Uh, we don't get the six hundred dollars an hour that you, that you blow, but that's, that's another subject. The first thing is, from the curveball you gave, we looked at Chatham County, Savannah, Georgia, compared their budget with ours, and it's twenty times greater. What do you mean by that? Chatham County consolidated budget is a billion dollars, that should be on page five of your handout, a billion, not million. A billion dollars consolidated. Their general fund budget is two hundred and nine million dollars. Their general fund budget is five times greater than ours. The, the curveball you gave us was to do a comparative analysis, as we do in accounting all the time. And you have to understand, this book is regimented upon FASB. FASB has more pages than this. So when you, when you try to do the things that you're trying to do, and you ever had the training, it's like trying to launch a space shuttle with a book of matches. The first thing is, we looked at the consolidated budget of one billion dollars compared with Dougherty County. We've already put the information in the handout for you. According to the latest census, when we submitted the packet to the clerk's office, Dougherty County had ninety-four thousand residents. In math, what you have to do is, you have to look at the plus or minus. So we use one hundred thousand instead of the ninety-four. If you take the one hundred thousand divided into your consolidated budget of eighty million dollars, your per capita cost is eight thousand eight hundred dollars per citizen. Chatham County is only thirteen hundred dollars per person. So it is an outlier, in other words, we are out of control. Now, we're gonna give you some recommendations. We looked at the sheriff's office, we looked at the coroner's office. All of them are out of, in other words, we were paying crazy figures when we looked at it. Our per capita cost right, running close to ten thousand dollars per citizen. Chatham County, thirteen hundred dollars per citizen. Well, they have more money. Why? Because they're not doing a lot of pretty things we do. But that, that's the long and short of it. For example, when we looked at the sheriff's department, our share takes thirty-one percent of the budget, the house, one and a half, one percent of the population, six hundred inmates, eighty-five or ninety-five percent of whom are African-American or black. We don't know, probably two hundred of them on technicality. So we went and looked at Chatham County, the district attorney's office, and the public defender's office. And ours is five times greater than Dougherty County, that is not the case in Chatham County. They not only have a public defender's office, they have an energy defense office too. Chatham County has a minority business office. What struck us was this. Their general fund budget is two hundred and nine million dollars. Now, there are three copies up there, you can look at this and see. Their millage rate is only eleven mil. Ours is gonna be seventeen mil from the mistake we made up on July twelfth, when we amended the budget by five million dollars. You notice on page five of the handout, that Chatham County has no mill increase or a five percent growth? I said zero, no mill increase. The last page of the handout shows the legislative delegation in Chatham County. Eight of the nine are African-American or black. The demo for this is fifty-nine percent are African-Americans, but yet they're in control of eight or ninety-one percent of all the positions. Why? See, we just spent an hour talking about stuff that should have been handled, you cannot mess with that Title VIII of the nineteen sixty-eight Fair Island Act. Some things you just cannot do, and you spend an hour trying to go, take a bulldozer and run it upside down. No, but, well, let's look at some other outliers that we're bringing to your attention. So you can check this, the clerk already has it. I will email it to you, and I have all nine metropolitan areas in the state, and we're gonna go through each one at the public hearing that's set for August ninth, I think it's in the morning and afternoon, we're gonna come back on August sixteenth and show you all of this information. The other thing that we looked at, public works. The thing that we did not find was simply, uh, this, for example. When we looked at public works and we looked at the coroner's office, we're gonna bring the coroner's office to you at the same time. Their coroner's office has many more attributes than what we have. In other words, they are following FASB guidelines, many more attributes, but it gives you a thing. The other thing about the coroner's office, and when you think about the state of Georgia, the state of Georgia was formed in nineteen sev, uh, what, seventeen seventy-seven, and it was named after King George, the third out of four, I, I forget which one, 'cause I teach US history. But the thing about, in the nineteen, in seventeen seventy-seven Constitution of Georgia, the coroner's office was what we call an elective office and a constitution office. When you get the information on Chatham County, do you know that's how it's listed? The coroner for, and so, if we're in the state, how can Chatham County have laws that are different from Dougherty County? So when you see these things, I'm not saying it's not important to talk an hour about the Fair Island Act, but some things you just need to know to leave them alone, 'cause you're not gonna beat the federal government. But when we looked at that and saw, so, well, how can the coroner be a constitution officer in Savannah, Georgia, and then you come down to Dougherty County? We say we can, that we can do what we want with the coroner. Well, one reason, we don't understand FASB. Other thing, we don't understand the constitution. So, the other, uh, thing we just wanted to point out to you, when we looked at the ratio of the outliers in the public works department. An outlier, I mean, when it's one and a half or two times greater than it should be, and compared to size, but nothing can change the fact that when we look at the demonstrative issues of the per capita that you threw the curveball, the per capita evens it out, if you understand what I'm saying. In other words, when you look at the dollar amount allocated for a service rendered or service delivered by the government compared here with somewhere else, and you're in the same geographical terrain with the state of Georgia, it should not be any legal difference, and it should not be so much more outlier difference. Why, why, why is that? I mean, well, it, it is our approach and what we try to do. Now... Uh, the last thing, uh, look on page, uh, the ones who had the copy, look on page fifteen. You have, uh, a picture of all of the, the elected members for Chatham County. And you notice on the lower left corner, out of the nine, and there's only one European American on there. But again, we've already done the calculation, and you have information that shows you what the census viewer has about Dougherty County, what it has about Chatham County, what it has about Albany, Georgia. So the information is there. So we're doing a lot of things, not so much wrong, it's because of cluelessness. You remember when we, when I brought to your attention that something is wrong here, that we shouldn't be approaching paying ten thousand dollars per citizen in Little Dougherty County, and, uh, two hundred and fifteen miles away in Savannah, they're paying only thirteen hundred dollars?
Can I ask you a question about that? Savannah-Chatham County is a consolidated government?
No, it's not.
Yeah, it is.
Not, not Savannah, now Savannah is the county seat of Chatham County.
No, Savannah-Chatham County, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong?
No.
Is it a consolidated government?
I teach this and that, I do, it's not the case.
Okay. I guess they have a, they have a metro, but...
Richmond-Augusta is consolidated.
Well, listen, I've been, I've been in the classroom thirty-five years, now you can beat me at something.
But, well...
This is not one of them.
Okay, so you said they haven't had a tax increase? They haven't increased their millage?
It's on page five.
Huh?
It's on page five.
Oh.
No millage increase, eleven mil.
Oh, well, according to their notice on July sixth, twenty twenty-one, the Chatham County Board of Commissioners has tentatively adopted a millage rate which will require an increase in property taxes by one point nine one percent in general maintenance and operation taxes, and that's for both the special services district. And... And that's for both the special services district and um, their M and O budget.
You you must be looking at a different page.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's on the internet under Chatham County, Georgia.
Well...
ChathamCountyGA.gov. Sorry.
No, that that's not what's in there though.
You you want me to tell me?
They may have, they may have done that if you're talking about that date, but the information in their budget is no millage increase, so that could have happened subsequently.
I'm just telling you what the public notice is that the Board of Commissioners in Chatham County sent out on July sixth, twenty twenty-one. And they have a meetings in July sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at nine thirty.
Oh, I know what you're talking about. You're you're referring to the same thing we're gonna do on August ninth and the sixteen. In other words, that backdoor type. That that's what that is.
No, this is notice of property tax increase. It's not a backdoor tax. They haven't set their millage. They haven't approved it yet. They're...
I- is it the rollback?
No, they're not rolling back.
Well, wha- let let me finish. Look at the data and then let the people look at it, and then that will determine that.
Again, did you have a question for Commissioner Russell?
Well, I I just think it's it's imperative if he's gonna come up here and make and do research and compare us to other municipa- other counties and their budgets to be factual. And if you're going to um, you know, accuse
Well, listen...
Darty County of poor fiduciary management and compare it to...
Poor is an understatement.
Let me finish and compare us to some, excuse me.
You interrupted me now.
No.
You you interrupted me.
I'm asking for clarification of...
Stop.
All right, I'm not gonna get into it. I mean, it just ha- I'm just trying to get the accurate facts, okay?
Well, let him finish, Commissioner Russell.
Well what what we'll do, you do not have copies of that information. So all you do not have copies. It's in the clerk's office. And for anyone who wanted, uh, again, the email is Barry Appleroy Wright at gmail. Barry Apple Wright, twenty twenty-one at gmail dot com. And it's in the clerk's office. And we will email it to you, and then you can look at it, and you can see. The uh, what is important here is, if you look at the documents as part of this presentation, it indicates uh, no millage increase and eleven mils. Even if it is an increase, it's still below the fifteen mils we are. So let us be clear about that. We can all about nickel and dime, but in worst case, their millage rate is still almost five mils lower than ours. So okay, how you look at it? Listen, I've been in the classroom thirty-five years. You can beat me at something. This is not one of, this is what we do. So you took an hour to talk about the house, and then when I get over here, it's BS, BS, BS. But what we'll do, again, Barry Apple Roy, twenty twenty-one at gmail dot com. And then we'll see, but we'll come back, because my time is valuable too, and I recognize yours is. So let's have the end of question. Remember this. When when you've done this thirty-five years, y- you probably know a little bit about it. See if there are any questions, Chair.
Yeah. Any question for Mr. Wright, uh, Commissioner Gaines?
Here, Mr. Wright, um, I I am so sorry. I, you know, definitely have no, have nothing but respect for you, Mr. Wright, and all that you've done over the years for this community. But I do think it is worthy of our investigation to make sure that comparatively, and and in any business that you're in, you always wanna look at your costs compared to uh, like businesses, or like governments, or like whatever. You you really do need to make sure that you are in alignment. It is called state-of-the-art research in governance, you know? And and I I agree with you. This, your effort to compare us to other uh, jurisdictions is quite legitimate. It is something we ought to do, you know? And ever since I've been on this board, I have always tried to say, well, how do we compare to others? Are we in li- in alignment with our fellow uh, governments? So there there is quite a bit of legitimacy in what, in my opinion, in what you're trying to do. It's something we ought to do as a government to understand, so and 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 if I'm making sense to you.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
So I I appreciate your efforts, but of course, we have a responsibility to authenticate what the information you have brought to us as a citizen. And if it is correct, then we need to acknowledge it. And if it's not, then we need to share what our understanding is of how we compare the other governments. If that makes sense to you. Okay.
And and uh...
And and I would love to sit down and and talk to you, because, I mean, I love this kind of stuff, to go through those figures and actually understand how we stack up. I love it, but um, maybe some others do not, but a- a- and I really don't wanna take their time if this is not something they think is legitimate, but I happen to think it is.
Yes, ma'am. Well, uh, before I leave, please, I'm going for my real job. What I mean by that, they pay.
Yes.
But but uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Gray, Commissioner Jones, un- understand me. I appreciate what Commissioner Gray is saying. I understand now that perhaps I should have qualified, say, well, this is what uh, Chatham County budget reflects as opposed to what, because they had not passed it at that time, so it was not really lost. So uh, I apologize for that. They had not passed it at the time when I pulled the data. And what w- we will do to correct that is, I'll provide to the clerk and anybody else who wanted the official documents from all of these governments before I bring them back to you. So you'll have a have in advance, so you'll, but let me warn one thing. Chatham County budget is four hundred pages, so just just keep that in mind.
Yeah, and you know, but but authentication is always required on our end, okay? Regardless of of who brings something to us, we have to authenticate.
All right, understood.
Thank you.
Any other question for Mr. Wright? Thank you, Mr. Wright, as always. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, one thing that was not on the agenda, I'd like to introduce Coach Massey. I appreciate your patience, uh...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Very good morning. Without a microphone.
And I don't know for who don't know Coach Massey, he's the uh, one of the coordinators for the NYSP program at Albany State University. And how many years you been over at Albany State?
Forty-six.
Just give us a little...
Forty-six years. I, like you said, I wanna introduce myself. My name is, my first name is Jesse, and my last name is Massey, but you can call me Coach. I know everybody pretty much on the board here, and uh, I wanna piggyback on Ms. Simmons said, bring something to the table that's resourceful and good. So I have some things that I wanna bring to the table today that's resourceful and good. Uh, we just completed our forty-sixth year of now is called Albany State Youth Enrichment Program. It used to be called the National Youth Sports Program until two thousand and four. I'm one of the originals. I was the first child, the first individual that participated in this program way back in nineteen seventy-five. And I've been there ever since. I'm a retired educator. I taught thirty-three years in the public school system. I taught Fitzgerald, Georgia. I taught in Baxley, Georgia. And I retired here in Albany, Georgia, which is home. I used to work right across the street then, Hotel Gordon, with my mom as a shoulder to cook. And she was the lady that prepared the meals every day. She worked there forty-four years, and I worked there twelve. So I have a lot of history. I'm I'm born and raised right down the street there, the Harlem District. Uh, formerly known as the Harlem District, then you go around the corner, that was the Mud Puddle. That's where I came out of. Uh, I'm approaching sixty-six years old. And uh, I was approached by my good friend, and I, we had a great conversation, and you need to be recognized because of the things that you did for us in this program. Uh, we really needed your help, and you stepped up to the plate. And you were talking about singles and doubles and triples. I think you hit a home run. Because Madam President and Mr. AL, I can't speak for them, but I can speak for myself and the young people that we had in the program this year. We usually have three to four hundred young people, ages eight to fifteen, involved in the Albany State Youth Enrichment Program. The numbers were short this year because of COVID and because of summer school. All the the Darty County School System decided to have summer school, and their last day is Friday for for summer school. So what I wanna say is, it's an integral part in this city that we, as a city and county, continue the process of trying to motivate and help young people. I'm I'm a certified math and language arts teacher. I I I coached first, then I taught. And when you coach first, you don't get the results. You gotta teach it, then you can coach it. So my my thing is, hats off to you for your donation that you gave to us. Uh, uh, you you words can't speak with dollars. Dollars represent a lot. And and when you got kids between eight and fifteen, and you're trying to keep them off the streets, you're you're trying to motivate them. We keep them from seven-thirty to two-thirty every day. And we just ended on July the sixteenth. Madam President added two more weeks to us. We were supposed to have been finished June the second. But the program was extended two weeks because she came to it and saw what we were doing, and and she loved it. So without talking, I brought a token of appreciation. And I'm I'm gonna make fun of Mr. Jones. He he probably won't want this, because he's a Tuskegee man.
But I'm gonna accept the gift.
So what I did was, I I I went and 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 got a token of appreciation here, and I would like Mr... Come on down, help me out. Come on, help me out. Come on, help me out. Yeah, as you know, football season coming up pretty soon, and and I went into the uh, went into the archives, and I wanna present everybody with a tiny football. Now, don't don't pass this, uh, Mr. Jones, this Tuske- this Albany State now.
It's got gold in it, so I can I can recognize.
It it, but it don't, but it didn't have a tag on it though. I can't. I I I have one for every commissioner, and... Mr. McCoy, I got you in the bag too, so. Thank you very much for letting me come up. I I hope I was brief enough not to bore you, but it means a lot to me to come back and 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 work and and be a part of these children and try to motivate them to get to the next level, because that's where we're gonna be successful. And 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 having kids not be in trouble, that that's the main concept. Any questions? Any questions for me? Because I knew y'all got a busy schedule.
We just thank you, Mr. Massey, for all you do. You've been around a long time, so have I. And you've always had a passion for youth, and uh, and you've done great with that NYSP program. You've been a great advocate for it, and we just hope that you'll do forty more years.
And and you know, Mr. Jones, a lot of people don't identify with the changing of the wording of it. We got it changed because the federal government stopped giving funds for it. It it was a big thing in the seventies, eighties, and nineties, and when two thousand and four came, the federal government decided not to continue the process. And we worked a long time until the new administration came to the university, and they said, well, we're gonna take money that we have, and we're gonna change the name of it. We're the only one left. This program was across the nation. There was two hundred and forty-eight programs in the United States. There's one. That's us. Tuskegee had it. Excuse me. See how you coughed?
But I just wanna say thank you, uh, Mr. Massey, for coming this morning. And also take my hat off to Commissioner Russell, uh, the chairman, uh, Mr. Newsom, as well as Commissioner Johnson from the Finance Committee, uh, continue to keep their commitment to the program and the other commissioners that support the Finance Committee. And again, just say thank you, and we tip our hat off to you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Gaines, we 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 do a great job. We would love for you to come out next year and just come and see what we do and and be a part of what we're what's happening. And uh, probably a group of nine-year-old girls will let you have them for a day. How about that?
I I would love to do so, Mr. Massey.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've I've watched your work from afar, but um...
It ain't easy, I'm telling you.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Moving on to uh, purchases. Recommendation to accept the quote, "To install new cameras at Turtle Grove and Riverfront Park for Public Works Department from a single-source vendor in Vision Technologies, Albany, Georgia, in the amount of twenty-two thousand one hundred and ten dollars. Funding is budgeted in splosh, seven county parks improvement equipment. Assistant County Administrator, Scott Allison, will address us, as well as uh, Public Works Engineer, Jeremy Brown is present also if we have any question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, everyone. We recommend approval of this purchase. Uh, this will provide security and protect our investment in the parks. Uh, this camera system will tie in with the existing one that we've been adding on out at other parks. We recommend approval.
Okay, any question for? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Uh, the next one, recommendation to purchase one, one-twenty-one Hyundai Santa Fe for the GBI Southwestern Regional Drug Enforcement Office from Albany Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram Hyundai Albany, Georgia for a not exceeding amount of thirty-two thousand and ninety-three dollars. Funding will be provided by the GBI Southwestern Regional Drug Enforcement Office. That's a long name. Assistant County Administrator Scott Allison will address. And then also, we have President, Mr. Eric, uh, our GBI Special Agent in charge. If you wanna come down, have anything to add, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Schwalz contacted us about this purchase. It is a a grant purchase and has been approved by their controlling board already. So we just need to provide authorization. We recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions on that particular purchase in from the commission? Thank you again, Mr. Scott. Uh, moving on to number six, additional business. Recommendation to accept, uh, I guess I would like to say thank you again for being present, uh, Mr. Eric, and your patience this morning. Thank you. Uh, I apologize for that. Recommendation to accept the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five Hazard Mitigation Plan uh, from our fire chief, EMA Director Cedric D. Scott is present to address. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you very much. It is a great honor to have an opportunity to appear before the commission again today. And um, I have a very important matter to present to you, the one that we're very happy about. It has taken a long time to get to this point. Uh, many meetings um, have occurred. County Administrator's been present, uh, some Mr. Paul Foggi there has been present uh, at these meetings. But to put together our Hazard Mitigation Plan, the plan runs for five years. I could certainly go through and read some of the highlights uh, to you. I just brought the the document in to show you the thickness of the of the document. But this document that is being brought before you today for your consideration has to be updated every five years. Consequently, the updated plan is required to be adopted by the governments of the City of Albany and Darty County, Georgia. Therefore, the Darty County twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five Hazard Mitigation Plan is being presented for review and consideration. The Federal Emergency Management Agency requires that every county and municipality have a pre-disaster mitigation plan in place and requires the adoption of such plans in order to receive funding from the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is a community's plan for evaluating hazards, identifying resources and capabilities, selecting appropriate actions, and developing and implementing the preferred mitigation actions to eliminate or reduce future damage in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents in the community. So it is my great honor to present to you the Darty County Hazard Mitigation Plan update for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five for your consideration.
Any questions, comment from the commission?
Yes, sir. It's gonna be emailed to us, Mr. McCoy?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Madam Clerk sent an email...
Uh, Madam Clerk sent an email. Uh, it's in your inbox. It's a link, uh, to this document. And I'd also like to add that, uh, one, one important, uh, thing about this particular document is it, uh, keeps us eligible for FEMA reimbursements should we be, uh, visited, uh, by a natural disaster.
Commissioner Gaines?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just one question, simple question. Um, does FEMA have to approve it or just the action of the local government? It's all that's required?
We have to meet their guidelines and putting it together. Uh, and the way we assure that the plan is sent to JIMA, Georgia Emergency Management Agency, for review. The plan, just to go just a tad bit, bit further in, into the details of it. We actually, um, through the assistance of JIMA, received the services of a consultant, uh, to help us put this document together. Actually, Katie Westbrook in Lux, um, you'll see that name in the document. But Katie Westbrook was our consultant. And the, uh, the, actually, uh, JIMA helped us secure that, uh, through providing us, um, financial assistance to help us secure, uh, a consultant to help us put it together. She led us through this process, all the meetings and bringing all the stakeholders together to put this document together. We actually led by a consultant so that we would stay, um, uh, in, in guidelines for putting the document together.
So it covers, it covers all natural and man-made disasters conceivable?
We, we tried to, yes, ma'am. Yes. Uh, and that's, we bring the stakeholders together that can help us think through those processes. Um, I mentioned Paul Fogey a moment ago. But Paul Fogey has a great knowledge of this community. He can, as we begin to walk through and we'll say, for example, we'll talk about dam, uh, if a dam were to cause a problem. So you have someone with that institutional knowledge that's a part of it, like Paul Fogey. He can bring, he can start talking about things that we need to start thinking about that we may encounter, then that makes its way to the plan. So you can just kind of stretch that out with all of the different, um, people who would be, uh, present. For example, we had, uh, um, representatives from our, um, Kenstock, for example, Assistant City Manager, uh, would participate because we have exposure there as well. So any kind of, um, uh, exposure that we could possibly think of, we, we talk about that and make sure that it is included in our plan.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
It's a great, great question.
Okay, Commissioner Jones?
Chief Scott, uh, you know, we have a lot of talented, we have a lot of talent. We have a lot of smart folks that, that work for the better and the betterment of this community. And you just happen to be one of the bright spots also. But certainly you all, people don't realize the, the magnitude of work that goes into a document such as the one that you have prepared and the, and the many long hours that, uh, that we've, uh, that you've compiled to, to, to get a document such as this. And Mr. McCoy had, he hit it right on the head when he said that that document is going to, uh, is going to enable us to get, uh, FEMA funds in case that we've had, uh, if we have another disaster. And I know that those funds have paid the bills because of the fact that, uh, I think we had about ten million dollars that we borrowed from our landfill, uh, to, to the last storms that we had. And we've been able to put it all back due to the, uh, due, due to, uh, work from people like you and others. And, uh, I just want to, uh, salute your greatness and, and your team that's around you. And you tell them, you know, to keep working hard because of the fact that at some point in time, uh, a, a water or, or wind, they're going to come, it's going to come up and pay us another close and personal visit. But we will be in a position to, to, to get back, get mitigated and get back up and going. Thank you so much for the work you do and, and, uh, tip my, tip my hat to you and to others as well that help you on your team. Great job.
Thank you very much. As you were saying, and I, I look back at the document and I see here, I didn't want to quote it without being accurate, but, um, I have fifty participants contributed to the update of this, um, uh, mitigation plan.
Tell them all thank you.
It's just, it's, it's amazing, uh, as you, uh, have, um, Human Resources is on here. Alfonso, um, from, um, from our Public Works Department, Doherty County Public Works and Jeremy Brown, the Police Department, Code Enforcement. It's just, the list is just exhaustive. Uh, Albany State University Police Department, uh, we involve. The Sheriff's Department. It is the, um, Doherty County Coroner who's, who's seated there. So I just, I won't continue down that list, but I just, I just, I want you to just see the, the kind of contributions that went in, into putting this together. EMA for some people may not be as, as glamorous as, as some, as some other things, but I want to tell you, um, it's glamorous to me. I love emergency management and, uh, working with our community to, to bring this forward, to put the plan together for the next five years. It's exciting to me.
It's, it's a great opportunity. Either you plan or you plan to fail. And, and I'm glad that you all are planning. Great job, great work.
Thank you.
Uh, if there are no more questions for the chief, I really appreciate you again. Appreciate your patience this morning, chief. It's always a pleasure to see you.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is B. Uh, review and discuss the proposed resolution providing for the use of the services of the Southwest Georgia Regional Commission for the purpose of preparing, submitting and administering FY twenty-twenty Community Development Block Grant COVID CDVG, uh, Food Bank Application to the State of Georgia Department of Community Affairs. County Administrator Michael McCoy, Southwest Georgia Regional Commission Executive Director Suzanne Angel, uh, Deputy Director Barbara Reddick and Grant Administrator Brenda Wade will discuss. Also, I'd just like to add on that this is the board that Commissioner Jones serve on, uh, that represents the county. Good morning. Mike?
Good morning, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you all heard, uh, the presentation this morning by the Feeding the Valley Organization as well as DCA. And we had, uh, EDC on the line. Uh, as Mr. Lowman mentioned, he contacted me about this project and it was very exciting. And he said, uh, that all, all Doherty County had to do was be a pass-through. Well, about a week later, uh, he called the meeting and it was half a day. And we found out the devil was in the details. It was a lot more than being a pass-through. Lot of work will be involved in, in, in getting this project off the ground. But, uh, Doherty County is, uh, very privileged to be able to facilitate, uh, this great opportunity and, uh, take advantage of leveraging, uh, these dollars that have been, um, allocated for our community. But we, uh, don't have a capacity in-house. And so what we're recommending is electing to use the services of Southwest Georgia Regional Commission to, uh, develop our application as well as to administer, uh, this particular grant opportunity. You have a copy of the, uh, proposed resolution. Uh, Attorney Lee has, uh, reviewed this and, um, we're, uh, recommending approval.
Okay. And would you like to come to the podium, Ms.? Good morning, Ms. Angel. And Ms. Barbara, um, if she's present also, she can come if you want. Good morning, good morning.
Good morning. Um, it's a pleasure to be here today. And, um, we are excited about this opportunity for Doherty County and the surrounding areas with the Food Bank application. Um, we think it'll serve the communities very well. Um, and we are, our, me and my team, we are here and we are already preparing to move forward to submit this application to DCA on behalf of Doherty County and to administer the project with your, um, with Michael McCoy's recommendation and with your approval. Will gladly accept any questions that you might have or?
I, I just want to tip my hat to you all as well. Another talented group of smart folks that, uh, do a lot of moving and shaking throughout the region, uh, under the leadership of, uh, Ms. Suzanne, you have Ms. Reddick and Ms. Wade, uh, three talented folks when it comes down to grant writing and securing dollars. These are the people who do it and, uh, and they do it in a professional manner. And I just want to commend you all. It, working together is, 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 it'll get the job done. And collaboration is what we're doing. And I think you all are some of the best partners we can, we can have. Not because I serve on the board, but, but because of the fact that you all just do a lot of hard work. And a lot of people don't realize how much work you do. And I don't see how you get it done.
Thank you very much. We appreciate those kind of words.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir. Uh, good morning, ladies. Uh, congratulations, Ms. Angel, on your, Angel, on your promotion.
Thank you.
And Ms. Reddick and Ms. Wade. Is there a cost to, to, um, submit, to hand this grant for us? Or is it covered in our agreement?
Yes, um, there is absolutely no cost to the county or to the Food Bank to submit the application. There are dollars within the, um, the grant itself to do the administration. So that's how we get reimbursed for the, for the time and effort we put into, to submit the application, to develop it and submit it.
My Commissioner Jones say free money is good money?
Oh, yes.
Chairman, I, I would like to, uh, add that we'll be coming back to you, uh, with other documents that will need your approval. Uh, this is something that, um, we, that has been put together in a relatively short timeframe. Believe it or not, a lot of work has been done in a short period of time. And as they say, we're, they're building, we're building an airplane as it's being flown. So this is the first step. So we will be coming back to you with, uh, other agreements.
Right, right. After we get more details and, and, and it, exactly how much, how much the grant will be and those kind of details, we'll come back. Um, I think after the grant's actually awarded with an administration contract, that would be more specific. And like Mr. McCoy said, we have more documents like the match requirement, who would be paying the match. We know that the Food Bank would be paying that, but we would have to have those kind of agreements in place. So there would be more agreements in the future. This is the first step that just, um, you know, says that you want us to proceed to go ahead and, and submit and prepare the application.
Okay, any further questions, comments? Again, like to just thank you guys for coming and appreciate your patience this morning with the meeting, you know?
Thank you.
Appreciate all the hard work and the collaboration with all the parties involved. But like you said, we glad it passed through our end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're looking forward to working with the county and, and getting this project underway.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, item C, recommendation to amend the FY twenty-twenty-one general fund budget from fifty-three million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars to fifty-five million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars for various grants. Also recommend amending the grant fund from the one million, nine hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars to two million, thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars to show the Heroes Grant and to create the Alternate Dispute Resolution Fund as requested by the Superior Court Judge, uh, Willie Lockett. County Administrator Michael McCoy and Finance Director Martha Henley will address.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, this is some administrative housekeeping. Um, we received grants that we didn't anticipate in, um, in last year's budget. And, um, if you will take a look at your handout, uh, the top, um, part of the page is the general fund. You'll see that we started at fifty-three point six million dollars and we're, uh, requesting the budget to be amended to fifty-five point two as a result of receiving eight hundred and thirty-one thousand in, uh, CARES, uh, grant funding. And we labeled this CARES, uh, Act funding, but we know that we did not get a direct allocation. This was just reimbursement that the governor made available out of the state's CARES Act money. And you'll see that, uh, five hundred and two thousand of that was used for the lump sum distribution and, uh, three hundred and twenty-eight was, uh, deposited into our fund balance reserve. And then, uh, we spent about four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, um, in unexpected COVID-nineteen expenses. And, uh, we'll be submitting, uh, we'll be submitting documentation for reimbursement from FEMA, uh, through their public assistance program. And, uh, you guys will be, uh, and Madam will be, uh, approving the Hazardous Mitigation Grant, uh, Plan, which will allow us to be eligible to get this reimbursement money. And then you'll see that, uh, we received money, uh, last fiscal year for the elections. And that was two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And so that's, uh, the general fund. The Alternate Dispute Resolution Fund, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. This is requested by, uh, Judge, uh, Lockett in money in Superior Court. And so we're recommending, uh, establishing that budget. This fund is supported by fees collected in the courts. And then lastly, uh, we're recommending that the grant fund be, uh, amended from one point nine million to two million as a result of a fifty-eight thousand dollar Heroes COVID-nineteen, uh, grant that we received, uh, to, to deal with, um, the unexpected COVID-nineteen expenses that we incurred. So, uh, this is a summary and, uh, we're recommending approval.
Any comment from, to County Administrator?
I have a quick question, sir. Uh, Ms. McCoy, you, you show where, where you're depositing the CARES Grant balance to the fund balance. Uh, what about if we receive the COVID-nineteen grant? What, what would we deposit that money? The four sixty-seven, seven hundred?
Uh, yes, that, that will go back into the general fund as well.
Okay, and then we, and so we spend all of that two ninety-five, two thirty-five for the election, I mean, yeah, last year, that's what we actually spent? Thank you, sir.
One question.
Yes, sir.
For you, Mr. McCoy. Under this alternative, uh, Alternate Dispute Resolution Fund, so the twenty-eight six was money that we had previously budgeted from the general fund for this program. And now we're shifting funding of this program to court fees. Is that correct?
Uh, the funding sources, uh, the court fees and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Martha, we got the money back in, uh, nineteen ninety-two? Yes. So I have Martha come forward and fill you in on the history.
Yeah.
Okay, the twenty-eight thousand, six hundred is funds that were left over from nineteen ninety-two when Superior Court, they had this, uh, they had this grant from the state. Okay. For every, every year since then, it's been shown as a liability in the general fund. So it was a reserved part of our fund balance. This year, Judge Lockett wanted to use, start this over again to help them with the cases that they have backed up, whatever.
Right.
And he got approval, and I, I put, I think I put that in your budget when we were working on the budget, approval from the state to, uh, assess, it's a ten-dollar fee that will be paid through the other courts. As a matter of fact, we, they started collecting it, um, I believe it was May. And so we've already gotten money on that. It's just that there was no budget set at the beginning of fiscal year twenty-one. So we had to, what we had to do was take the reserves, the restricted reserve from the general fund and put it in this fund. We created another fund so that it wouldn't get, be commingled with.
So essentially, we've taken that reserve from twen- night?
Ninety-two.
From ninety-two and rolled it into a specific newly created fund, um, that from this point will be funded based on the court fees, the, the surcharge on court fees?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I know it seems a little odd that this comes to you now because, you know, in Finance Committee, we talked about this fund. But we, we knew that it was going to be there. So that's why it was presented to you at that time in the, in the Finance Committee. And of course, they are, um, they are recommending they're about eighty thousand dollars a year in those fees. So it'll be a separate.
So their, their need for the program is about eighty thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
And I, I guess my biggest concern is, you know, we saw such a, um, stoppage of the courts this year. Now, I know these, this money comes on filing fees and you can still file. Um, but i- if, you know, resurgence of the pandemic hits or something else happens where your courts slow down, um, this funding engine slows down too. And, you know, if, if we become, uh, deficient from fully funding the, uh, this program, are we going to have to amend the budget and come out of the general fund for that delta? Or how would that work?
No, sir. Uh, fortunately, we have, uh, the stimulus money. No, sir, uh, fortunately, we have, uh, the stimulus money.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, helping the courts deal with the backlog as a result of COVID-nineteen is an eligible, uh, expense and one that we're examining now to potentially, uh, be a priority.
So techni, so technically then, if we're charging an, a surcharge on court filings to fund this program, and we know that generally speaking, the volume of filings multiplied by that surcharge should cover this budget, and those filings go down, that's a loss of revenue. So can we also get that loss of revenue?
There is a, a revenue loss formula, uh, relative, related to the, uh, stimulus funds that you have a lot, lot of flexibility to use. And so you could theoretically use lost revenue funding to fund that shortfall.
Okay.
Commissioner Gray, was your father on, on the bench in ninety-two?
No comment.
Yeah. Yeah, good gift.
Chairman, I, I, I'm sorry, Mr.?
No, go ahead.
Commissioner Gray? Uh, I would like to, uh, clarify, um, uh, something relative to the FEMA COVID-nineteen grant and the amount of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. That's what we spent. Uh, we will be eligible for seventy-five percent of that being returned to the county, uh, once we go through the, um, through the process for reimbursement. So we'll get about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars back, assuming they approve everything that we submit for reimbursement.
Yes, sir.
So we'll be responsible for twenty-five percent of that cost.
Any more questions or comments to Mr. McCoy?
And so that, uh, one more clarification, so the two ninety-five, two thirty-five, uh, from the grant for the elections, that just goes back in the General Fund?
They spent every dime.
Really?
Camera thing.
Good.
Internet services.
Yep. Okay, anything else, Mr. McCoy?
No, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, number seven, updates from the County Administrator, Mr. McCoy?
Uh, nothing further, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. County Attorney?
Uh, nothing further, Mr. Chairman. Um, I guess I'll go first since I'm here. Uh, one thing I want to ask, I guess this is a question for the, uh, County Attorney. Um, in reference to, and I'm trying to figure out how I want to word it, the, the convenience stores, and I really want input from the commission, really. Um, you know, when you go into convenience stores, except for those places like Lanier, uh, Sitco, Home Run Food, you have, uh, restroom access. And I was, I guess, witness of a situation, uh, Friday where a young lady came into Oriental store, and she asked could she use the restroom, but her, the way she worded it was, "Is your restroom really out of order, or it just a sign saying it's out of order?" And it started a little slight, I guess, confrontation with the store owner as well as the lady. But I guess my thing is, actually, Spencer, how legal is that knowing that it, it, from our standpoint in the county, talking about the city, but the convenience stores that's owned by Oriental, where it says, and then you have the nail shops doing the same thing, uh, where no restroom access? Uh, I'm opening up that conversation, is that legal? And I guess it throw me off when she asked the question, "Is your restroom really out of order, or you just have the sign that say no public use?" Is that legal?
Well, what I'll do is, I'll take that question under advisement, and I'll get right back with you.
Okay, so I don't know if any, you kind of got where I'm at with that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I know I've been to plenty of stores and you see that, uh, uh, that sign. Uh, travel a lot, so sometimes you don't know, um, you don't get to pick the store, the store picks you. Um, I think it's up to the business to determine whether or not, um, they have public access to restrooms or whether it's for staff only. Um, but it also should be, uh, you know, on the store owner, um, if he picks and chooses who he nods to and who he doesn't, that it's not really out of order. Um, so, you know.
Yeah, I was looking at the impact, or the financial impact of just all of our citizens using those public places and providing from that standpoint. And I know, uh, I, I've just been brainstorming about that. So if you would, I would like you to research it and see, based on, from a county standpoint, um, you know, I think that's something of denying somebody something. I mean, I understand the both sides, but I don't, I look at it a little bit different eye as that lady walked in that day, you know, so that's it for me.
Yeah, I just say, you know, uh, if you run into one of those stores, I mean, keep your money in your pocket and stay in the road. I mean, because of the fact, a lot of those folks are just not gonna let you use them. I mean, I don't think we need to get in a knock-down, drag-out fight with them because they won't let you use the restroom, keep your money in your pocket, keep your car in the road, and go to the next one. That's my take on that, I've run into those, like, uh, there's a lot of them still out there like that.
It was just amazing to me how there was no advertising, and it's like just went kind of across the whole state, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's like that sometime.
Yeah, but that was just amazing to me, it didn't really, uh, hit home to that, the way she came in and had the axe, and it's like, whoa.
There's a lot of it out there.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway, uh, Commissioner Nukes, if you have anything?
Uh, nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna go with, why, Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I, I do have something, sir, I'd be sure about it. Uh, during our Finance Committee meeting, uh, about the understaffing of the jail, Mr. McCoy, the comment was made about speaking to the, the judges about incarcerating people under technical offenses, and the, and those individuals, uh, were, were, were in violation over something technical and could actually be released in pre-trial or something. I would really like to hear from, uh, our state probation office about that process, 'cause I, I do think that is a, a problem in our community, uh, that we can address in trying to, in trying to cover our staffing, if we have people in jail that could be, for non-violent offenses, that could be released under some kind of, or, or incarcerated over some kind of technical or technicality, as he stated, uh, could we, could we have re, readdressed that policy or look at that policy a little deeper? You following me on that?
Uh, yes, sir. We'll, we'll make sure we bring the appropriate...
So, I'm just clarifying, 'cause, 'cause what I recall was that because of the low staffing, there's, there's a legal ratio of staff to inmates that you have to maintain. And as staff numbers decrease, you can only have so many inmates. They can either parse them out, uh, to other facilities at a pretty significant cost to the taxpayers, uh, or they could look at finding the ones, um, start filtering through the ones that they could let out, uh, on some type of, uh, bond or, um, probation versus staying in, in the jail. And I think that's where they were taking a lot of, a lot of people who were in for probation revocations on technicalities and other, uh, you know, low-level, non-violent offenses, uh, that were, normally would be in jail until their court hearing, they went ahead and, and put back out on the street, uh, on probation.
Right, that's correct, but I, I think there's a, put, put any people in that situation. I think if there's an opportunity to free people to get back to work and keep their jobs, I think we should look at it, and we are, I think we owe, we're owed that much of our responsibility to look at it.
Yeah.
And my only other thing I want to say is the confusion description of a millet rate increase, and it's hard for people to understand, but I think, I think a lot of people misunderstand that it's the value of our millet rate or our meal that increased and not the millet rate itself. And so when they hear about rollback or tax increase, it's not that we're rolling, it's not that we're increasing the millet rate, it's just the value of that meal is increasing. Correct, Mr. McCoy?
That is correct.
And I think, I think that gets out in the public a, a little differently sometimes than is understood. So I just want to make a point of clarity.
Well, you may want to ask Wendy, I guess, if it, in, in more of a layman terms on our, uh, webpage on, explain.
I, I think the state, the state of Georgia has it by law, you have to write it a certain kind of way, and that's what the confusion is in that.
We, we also, uh, included, uh, language and layman's terms to, uh, explain that it's not a, uh, tax increase.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, and so that's laid out, and I think, uh, Ms. Where, isn't that, uh, published in the paper as well? Yes, it's published in the paper as well, uh, explaining the state law in that the millet rate was not increased.
In the words of Commissioner Ethenjoy, another group of wonderful, smart, talented individuals. Thank you, brother.
Yeah, but, but, but as far as our citizens are concerned...
They're gonna be fit with two dollars.
What they understand is that it is more money out of their pocket. So, um, I mean, the, the technical, uh, differences don't really matter to them.
But, but, you know, the, the money's gonna come, yeah, I think it's what, two dollars, is it two dollars, uh, in one, in, in one dis, in one area, and a dollar and something in another position? But it, it wasn't anything that we did, it was just based on the fact that the, uh, property values went up. I mean, we can't control, that's just like putting your money in the stock market, you know, and you got it out there, and you got it in a, you got it in a mutual fund. I mean, if, if, if everybody go up, everybody goes up, and if everybody loses, everybody loses. So that's kind of like where we are on that, so we didn't, it's nothing we did, it was just based on, on the economy and what was happening here in our, in our little economy, that's why we got to, to go up. So it's out of our control.
You know, it, 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 well, we could have rolled it back, and there, and it would not have gone up. So, uh, the fact is that even though it's a small amount of money, it is still money that's coming out of their pockets, and we did have the choice, and we exercised the choice to allow the value of a mill to, uh, increase and not roll it back. That was our choice.
But if we rolled it back, that would have, that would have, that would have, uh, what, uh, it would have destroyed all the little work that we did for its gains, I mean, and, I mean, if, if, if we could see rolling it back would have benefited, then fine, but certainly, I would prefer to, to, to take these, take this little gain that we had, pay two more dollars here, and then later on, I mean, next year, we look back at it, I mean, once all the numbers come in from the real estates and how well it's doing, certainly, I think we'll, I think we'll gain far more than we'll lose doing this, uh, doing these two or three nickels that we're counting. I mean, I know people don't want to pay extra, but sometimes you just have to pay for services. I, I hate to pay for them sometimes.
I, I do agree with you, Commissioner, uh, however, we did make the choice to, uh, allow that small increase to happen.
Well, uh, moving on.
Chair, Chairman, excuse me, I, I would like to, uh, get clarification, uh, relative to Commissioner Johnson's request. Uh, you mentioned the state probation office, I want to make sure that I bring the right people in front of you.
Okay, I speak to you, uh, on sideline.
Thank you.
Um, leaving off, starting back over with, uh, Commissioner Russell?
I'm good, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Gaines?
Nothing, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner John?
I think this is a good day, we're just thanking everybody, I just want to congratulate someone now, Commissioner Johnson. Uh, he's been, he's been appointed to the, uh, Department of, uh, Community Affairs Board, that's the DECA phone, that's the DECA, so there's a lot of grant money up there, Commissioner. I hope, once you get on the board, I hope you'll find some and, and help fund some down this way for our budget.
That's the plan, that's the plan, sir, that's the plan.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Well, one thing I guess I would be remiss, I'd like to introduce somebody that's real special to me, uh, Captain Lemon, uh, who don't know, um, he was my campaign manager, uh, when I was, first ran, when I was, what, twenty years old, and, uh, I'm gonna have him to stand, because people thought they was voting for me because of my good looks, but when he's standing, uh, they didn't have any... So when I say vote for me, they were like...
I, I'm glad you clarified who he was, I thought he was undercover, I didn't know who he was.
Well, I really appreciate you, you know, he's retired now from the Marines and been back, uh, and we really appreciate you taking the time, this boy, and come out and visit with us. Uh, nothing further, we adjourn.